Okay, everyone, this is a 30-second warning. Please take your seats and we'll get started in about 30 seconds. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening at the Gilbert Town Council meeting for May 17, 2022. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask Councilmember Anderson to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to ask Corey Brinholt to please come down for the invocation. Thank you for being here this evening.
Our dear heavenly Father, we bow our heads before Thee this evening and we offer a word of prayer that we may give thanks for the many participants and sacrifices that people have made to be here and to prepare for this meeting. Father, we pray and ask for a special blessing upon those that are diligently working through this city, through this town, that we may be able to feel that they are watched over and protected, that everyone may operate in a safe and controlled environment. We pray that those that are giving their countless service, that their families and their individual lives will be blessed. We give thanks for these many things and we pray that our minds will be open and receptive to the messages and thoughts shared today, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Corey. Corey's a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We appreciate you coming out and offering an invocation. First on our agenda is a proclamation that will be presented by Councilmember Anderson for Public Works Week, National Public Works Week.
Jessica, you and your team, if they'd like to come down, come on down. Do we have anybody else out there that's in Public Works, like to come down? Thank you. You heard us talking earlier about the City of the Future Initiative, and one of the major pillars, one of the three major pillars of our City of the Future Initiative is our infrastructure, both in planning and development. And this is a part of the team that's involved in doing that and providing the excellent infrastructure in the community that supports our economy and supports the quality of life that our people enjoy. It just so happens that this year is the 62nd year of the National Public Works Week. That's, so you haven't been doing it for 62 years, have you?
No.
So none of you had? But we really wish to congratulate the Public Works team for everything they do in the community. They offer valuable services and that we take for granted so much during each day of our lives, and we're so thankful for it. You usually have a rodeo this time of year, too, don't you, of some kind?
In the fall.
Oh, it's in the fall? Okay. I thought that was during Public Works Week. Anyway, let me read a portion of this proclamation. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Gilbert. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. And we'd like to congratulate our Public Works professionals during this week. Please join me in giving them a round of recognition. Did you want to say something, Jessica? David's gonna say something.
It's bad to give meat wine. He turned it off. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Thank you, Mayor Peterson, and members of the council. Public works are what our lives and just the quality of our lives write upon each and every day. Often, the invisible and unsung heroes, they're there at the beginning of emergencies, they're there at the end of emergencies, they're there when it's not emergencies. It's something that it's an honor to be able to serve, and it truly is an honor to be part of Jessica's team here in the Public Works Department for the Town of Gilbert.
Why don't you induce everybody that's up here?
Sure, quickly. David Fabiano, our town engineer. I'm Jessica Marlowe, the Public Works Director for the town. Susannah Struble, who's our CIP Manager and Assistant Town Engineer, and Rebecca Hamel is our Water Manager. I just wanted to also thank all of our hard-working employees whose days are going on right now at our water plants and who start very early in the morning. So hopefully, some of them are listening in and receiving the recognition and appreciation that we have for all of them and the work they do. So if you see your garbage truck driver today, tomorrow, this week, be sure to give them a wave and tell them thank you, along with all the other great crews that we have working out in the community every day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a proclamation for Kids to Park Day that will be presented by Councilmember Tilke.
Is that on now? Thank you. Rocky, come on down. I was looking for you. I didn't recognize you in your suit coat. So happy to have you here. Thank you. It's my honor to read the proclamation, Kids to Park Day. Whereas May 21st, 2022, is the 12th Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust and held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to enjoy the outdoors by visiting their local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Whereas Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And there, now on behalf of Mayor Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do I hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022, as Kids to Park Day. And I'd like to just, well, present this to you, so thank you, Rocky. And also to acknowledge all of our employees out at Parks and Rec and all the work that you do to make this a better community for all of our families. And would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I think Gilbert is very lucky. You have some beautiful playgrounds, some beautiful parks, some beautiful riparian preserves. And we would just encourage all the families out there to bring their kids out on this special day, and hopefully, they can appreciate them.
Thank you. Did you get the photo you needed? Okay, here we go. Thank you. Thank you, Rocky.
Chevelli, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amy Yentes.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Decorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Now we'll move on to communications from citizens, and I'll pass this over to the vice mayor.
Thank you. And Chevelli, did we have any other forms?
Okay.
For anybody who wishes to make a comment on communications from citizens but hasn't filled out one of these forms, they're in the hallway at that table. The Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out one of these speaker cards. For this portion of the agenda, citizens have an opportunity to identify for the Town Council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed or posted agenda. Under the provisions of Arizona Open Meeting Law, the Town Council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the Town Council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on non-agenda items, and we regret that the council can't respond beyond thanking you for your comments. The town does ask that when your name is called, you come forward, the podium's up here, state your name and place of residence, and then you will have three minutes. It's the standard time. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum. We just ask that, you know, keep professional, don't clap, so we can maintain the decorum. And I think our first speaker, and then we did have two members of the public who listed on their form Public Hearing Item Number 10, but this is a consented agenda item, so we'll just include that in communications from citizens. So the first speaker is Paul Cowp, if you wouldn't mind proceeding to the podium. Three minutes.
You ready to, ready to go? Give me a start. All right, here we go. Three minutes. All right, good evening, Mayor Bridget and Town Council members. I thought it was interesting, the night's proclamation was Kids to the Park, right? I think I got another little idea on how to get more kids to the park, but I'll explain a little more. Anyway, my name is Paul Cowp. I live here in Gilbert. I'm dressed here as a pilot because I happen to be a pilot for Southwest Airlines, captain at Southwest Airlines. I'm also the owner of a not-for-profit company here in Gilbert called STEM Plus C, where we, my part of STEM Plus C, I engage students in aviation, aeronautics, and aerospace. The reason why I'm here tonight is I'm advocating that the Town of Gilbert establish a dedicated flying site for model rocketry and model airplanes. This is the kind of stuff I'm talking about. I'm not talking about an AMA Academy of Model Aeronautics full-blown flying site with the big airplanes that you might be aware of. I'm talking more of ParkFly, small electric airplane-type stuff. This, what you might consider a hobby in the past is no longer just a hobby. This is a legitimate STEM tool. That airplane flies no different than the 737 that I fly. The way it flies, the controls it uses are the same as on my airplane. And I don't know if you know right now, but we're almost in a national emergency with a lack of students going into the aviation workforce, whether that's pilots or AMP mechanics, and we're suffering from a lack of student engagement in aerospace and aeronautics, engineering specifically. We have shortages in all of those. There is a concerted effort with the FAA, with NASA, industry, to engage students in the K through 12 level, and I've been on roundtables discussing this on a federal level, how to engage students K through 12 with this stuff. The guy that does this stuff lives here in Gilbert. I am known in DC offices. You guys have me here to utilize in the Town of Gilbert. I noticed that Town of Gilbert wants to be the City of the Future, right? And you had an artist create that vision. You know what's missing from that vision? I didn't see an airplane. I didn't see a rocket ship. I didn't see any flying cars. Maybe the artist saw the future and realized the Town of Gilbert never invested in aviation, aeronautics, and aerospace, and realized there wasn't going to be flying, there wasn't going to be airplanes or flying vehicles in the City of the Future. So anyway, down to eight seconds here. I appreciate your time. These are the kids that are just part of what we do. So, anyway, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul, and everybody. Next, we'll have Don Buckland, the former Kelly Budget Director. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Don Marie Buckland, and I am a resident of Gilbert. I'm not here as the former employee, but while I did work here years ago, I have, I just wanted to share my appreciation as a resident tonight. As a family that is still paying for our youngest of two children, of two, of five children, our youngest two of five children to go through college right now, we wanted to thank you for the mayor and council and the entire leadership team for your tireless efforts to keep our taxes and our rates and our fees low and provide us with exceptional customer service and exceptional public service. As you make decisions tonight, including that of the budget, I also ask you to keep in mind why you choose to live in Gilbert, because I know why I do. And it's not because I used to work here. When I pick up the phone now and I call, I don't know the person on the other end of the line, but I can tell you this: Your team is amazing. Absolutely amazing. If I need to call utility billing because I made a mistake, they helped me get to the bottom of that, they helped find a solution for me. I've had the opportunity to live and work all over the world, and I'll tell you, most cities will say that they're special. Gilbert's special. Gilbert's very special. There is no place like Gilbert. I love the presentations that came up here, the proclamations just before, and it was such perfect timing, because whether it's our Parks and Recreation, our Public Works crews that are out there tirelessly working behind the scenes to make sure that our toilets flush and our water turns on, we don't think about the chemists at the plant, we don't think about the crack ceiling that's going on to keep the water from going into the pavement. We certainly don't think about the amazing budget and finance teams that put together this plan and look years and years into the future to make sure that those services are sustainable. We don't think about the economic development team that makes Gilbert actually competitive with everybody in the entire world. So my ask of you is this: As you look to make decisions tonight and every night, keep in mind the reasons that you're here, the, what you stand for and what you're trying to fix, but please also keep in mind what you love. Thank you.
It's very nice to see you, Don. Our next speaker is Mitchell Katie. And then we'll have on deck Jared Canton next.
Good evening. I've got a topic that can be relatively controversial. In contrary to popular belief, I'm not a professional speaker, but I'm gonna try to get my point across as easy and quickly as I can. The problem that I'm gonna bring up has been festering and growing for quite some time, and there's been people that have tried to get involved in this, do something about it, but they get shot down, they get no response, they get no help. I'm bringing it to you, because I've gotten the same problem. I have the same problem with it. I've talked to numerous people in the city, in the police department, at the properties, and it's the unknown where, but it needs to go somewhere very quickly. Some of you are gonna be upset with some of the things I'm gonna bring up. That's okay, because this needs to be resolved. The problem that I'm running into right now is that I live on the corner of Haley and Elliot, and when I go shopping at Basha's, I run into numerous children illegally, unsafely, riding scooters, motorbikes, sometimes two and three on them, sometimes four, some golf carts with six or seven. And this has been in a situation where I personally have almost hit several of these kids because they dart out in front of your car. Thank you TikTok for giving these challenges to these children, because this challenge has become a scenario where it's become an epidemic, it's become an every-night thing. And what I don't want to see happen is I don't want to see one of these kids get hurt. So as a community, and as a group of people that have the power to make something happen and get involved, I'm saying, let's prevent that from happening, let's keep that from going any further, let's get involved so we can get this problem solved. It's not the kids' fault, it's not the parents' fault, it's none of our fault, it's a community issue, and we need to talk about how these kids ride these vehicles, what the laws are, understanding the police. I have gone to them several times. Nothing wrong with the police department, I support you guys all the way. However, what I get everywhere I go is the red tape, to get involved in this is way harder than I need to be. I need to get upper management's permission, I need to get somebody else's permission. I guess the question I ask myself is, is how many people do we gotta get permission from to bury a dead child? This needs to be taken look at. Somebody needs to look at this problem, and we need to resolve this issue. It's led into other things. It's also led into kids getting ambushed by other kids riding other vehicles, shooting them with frozen paintballs, airsoft guns, Orby guns. I've got pictures upon pictures of kids that have sent me their pictures with their parents' permission. I've spoken to all these families, and I've got pictures of kids with welts all over their bodies from being ambushed. I got one little kid that got shot right in the forehead by a frozen paintball. I don't know if you understand how that feels. It does not feel good, but it's a dangerous situation. There's one little girl that got hit in the eye, and she's trying to recover from that now. So this is an issue that we all need to take a look at. For those that have parents that have gotten these scooters for their kids, I don't blame you, I don't blame the children. But as a community, we need to get together and solve this problem before we have a fatality. And if we don't, then shame on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell. Jared Canton. And then next, we'll have Stephanie Robertson.
Mayor Peterson, Town Council, just tough to follow that, but on a little bit lighter note, I just want to say with what Paul had to bring to the table earlier, I've known him for probably about three or four months right now, and the guy is just an outstanding, upstanding pillar of the community. I can't believe he's real, as much as he brings to the table. Teaching my four-year-old how to learn how to fly, that was just awesome. That was something that I grew up getting to see my parents and their older adult friends get to do, but it was financially something that was never feasible, it wasn't something that we could do. To see that that's a real opportunity is awesome for me. I think having the government, what's that? Okay. Having the government spend a little bit of money to help that go forward, to give kids that opportunity, so it's not a financial barrier, is pretty, pretty awesome. And Paul's last event, where his nonprofit was at the city, Gilbert Regional Park, as a matter of fact, drew in nothing short of Fortune 500 companies that were recruiting, some of the top colleges in the state, one of the top California drone racing events promoters, whatever was in town for this, so by no means small potatoes. First class all the way. Some of our retired veterans were there also showing kids of all ages how to construct equipment and whatnot, and that's something I got to do because my dad was a mechanic. But there's a lot of kids that will never get that opportunity, and anything we can do to help fund Paul and get that taken care of and help fill that void, so kids don't go, you know, wandering through the neighborhood looking for stuff to steal out of cars because they actually have something to look forward to and something that they actually are pursuing because they're passionate about it would be a great use of government funds. Go ahead. Anything you want to say, bud? No? Okay. All right. Thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Stephanie Robertson, and then Terry Natty, and that'll, I think that's the conclusion of our speakers.
I've seen that back there going, how does everybody know when three minutes is up? I see now. Well, now I know. Okay, so what I would like to address is the plan to widen Ocatillo between Val Vista and Greenfield, the stretch of road that only has like four accidents in the last few years, according to your statistics. My family, we live on the north side of Ocatillo between there, and we moved here purposely. We searched all over to find the house that we wanted, and we came because it was a rural area, and we love it. We live on a county island, though. We were not able to vote on this. We did not get surveyed. People did not come and talk to us about it, and now we're having to deal with the issue. Yes, we knew that we would eventually, the road would be widened. We had a 55-foot easement, which we knew about. Now we've found out that the easement is larger, plus another 10-feet easement for traffic or equipment to be parked on our road, which, actually, on our front yard... traffic or equipment to be parked on our road, which actually on our front yard. Here are some of the things that we're kind of concerned about. And there's 46 families that are affected, not just me. And it's on both sides of the road. And here are the things that are upsetting us. The traffic is minimal on our road. It will be substantially increased when the bridge is built. And it will go from, like I said, four accidents in the last year to God knows how many and how fast it'll be. How will our property values be impacted? That's going to be a big problem. Will the speed be 45 miles an hour? Will it be faster? We already have people who race down the road, and that's only two lanes. Wait till there's four lanes and they can really go fast and race against each other going in the same direction. The traffic problem isn't us. The traffic problems are all in North Gilbert. And I don't know why we're focusing here where it's basically more rural. Will we be forced to pay taxes on the money that we get for our easement? Actually, what happens is, yes, we do. And the money doesn't go to us. It goes to our mortgage. So if we want to build a wall in front of our house to keep away the four lanes of traffic, I guess we're going to have to go get a loan to do that. There's lots of other issues. Like, we are one of the families that has horses. There's a plan to put an equine path in front of both sides. Why? Nobody in their right mind is going to ride a horse on a four-lane road that's going 45 miles an hour. We've got other issues, and I'll be glad to talk to anybody who's interested.
Thank you, Terry. Can we down?
Hi, can you all hear me okay? Excellent. My name is Terry Natty. I live in a county island within the Gilbert Planning area. So, dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, I am one of the impacted 46 of the Ocatillo from 148th Street to Greenfield CIP project. We, the impacted, are against the current scope of this project. I have read the available documentation in the 2014 TMP and the smattering of more recent documents that are currently available on the website. I have found several examples of statistics, both current and at that time forecasted to 2035, that support our desire to change the scope of this project. That was sent to you in an email on May 12. We ask for the opportunity to speak and negotiate in a constructive manner to find a mutually beneficial solution. Most of the impacted are county island properties. As such, we don't have the opportunity to vote for you, Council members, and on the issues that affect our community too. This is our first opportunity to plead our case. We trust that you will allow us the opportunity for input. As the gentleman impressed, I can't remember his name, how important it is that you all leave no stone unturned. During the TMP presentation that we were here for, I wrote down some notes. You guys say that you are the city of the future, but you're also a town with a very rural heritage, and you love that heritage because you distribute it. We have Heritage Square, you know, all these things about our rural roots. Moving people, not cars, but there's no mention of horses. So I'm assuming the multi-use trail is an equine trail as well, but I'm not sure. The multi-phase community, does that include us county islanders? Of the 1,975 surveys that were completed that went into that TMP, how would a county islander know about it to complete that survey? If you put that 1,975 surveys into perspective, out of the 263,000 blah, 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 residents, that's less than an eighth of a thousandth of a percent of the viewpoint of your population. The thing mentions LOS, Levels of Service. On Ocatillo today, per that document, it's an A. Per tomorrow, per that document, it's a B. How does it need to be five lanes? The crash density that she said, was that actually a four-year of 2015 to 2019? And there were four minor accidents, no major, no fatalities. That will absolutely change. I have a lot more.
Thank you, Terry. Mayor, I think that concludes our communications from citizens. I don't have any other forms.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Before we move on to the consent calendar, I just wanted to take a quick moment to welcome our guests from Northern Ireland. We have Alderman Mark Cosgrove up in the back of the room, and we have a couple of his members of his team from Antrim, Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, Stephen Norris and Michael McCanna. Nice to see you here this evening. I know our council meetings run a lot different than yours. I think you have 40 councilors on your team there in Northern Ireland. Patrick, could you imagine 40 of us? No. No, I don't think he could. And I know there's a lot more differences in the way that our meetings run compared to yours. So we're very happy to have you here this evening. And Vice Mayor, if you'd like to take the consent agenda.
Yes, I only have item 10. I know, I was trying to do the quick math. How many would be Councilmember Yentes? It would make him want to pull his hair out. I think item 10 is the only item I have polled on this. And then item seven being continued to six, 14. Did I miss any other items Councilmembers wanted to poll? Seeing none, I will motion to approve items three through six, continue item seven until the June 14 meeting. Item, not continue, but motion to approve item eight and nine, items 11 through 15. How do I do, Shively? Entertain a second? Second? Oh. All vote? Motion passes unanimously, and we'll move to item 10, which is the CIP. Do we have a presentation on this?
Would you like a presentation or would you just like to ask some questions? What would be best? I think Kelly's prepared for either. Maybe it would be easier just to ask questions for specific items. Who polled it? Did you poll it, Vice Mayor?
I heard multiple people.
Oh, multiple people. Okay.
That this one was going to get polled, so.
Who would like to start with some questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, I had just a couple of questions, but maybe for the public. If we better understood that by approving this capital improvement plan, that each one of these projects comes back before this board and in a public hearing before we actually move forward on these projects, is that correct? Or maybe you could explain better.
Mayor, Councilmember Tilke, thank you. Yes. Is it on?
Yeah.
All right. Can you hear me a little bit? Okay. I'll try and, I'm taller than some people. So yes, by approving the CIP here, it approves the first year of funding. So those would be projects that are planned for fiscal '23. And then any of the projects that have contracts that would come back to council for specific approval, you would see those on future agenda items. I think the threshold is $100,000. So there may be some of the smaller contracts that wouldn't come to council, but that would follow the purchasing policies. So there would be opportunity for input through our regular channels.
And I'm not sure who to ask this to, so I'm just going to throw it at you, Kelly, and see if maybe somebody else can help out. So there seems to be several consultant reports and different things that we have going on at the same time as we're evaluating CIP projects. And as an example, probably when we look at the Heritage District, we've got several things going on, but perhaps there's a CIP project that maybe is planned for this year and we're moving forward. And I guess where I'm getting to is, are we kind of stepping back when we go into the CIP and communicating with all those other entities within the town to make sure that we're not moving forward on something that maybe we've shifted gears on? I'm just using the Heritage District since I'm kind of the liaison for that one. So sorry, Dan, for using your team. But it seems like we have a lot of moving parts. And so sometimes when we get something approved, I guess what I want to do is just make sure we feel comfortable and the public feels comfortable that we're taking the time to check out with our fellow departments and making sure we're on the same page.
I'll phone a friend with Suzanne.
So on an annual basis, we're allowed, we work with all the departments to update the CIP on an annual basis. We look at every project that's in there. We coordinate it together. And then we kind of somewhat ask that they work within their master plans, their LRIPs, all of the elements that they are trying to provide the level of service that their element in the community would be providing. So we do a lot of coordination with that. I will tell you, we have, over the last two to three months, been working with the Economic Development Group on the Heritage Projects. There's a lot of projects down there, right, all together, to make sure those are lining right and that they're basically, any adjacencies to other projects are being taken into account. So as a part of that annual update, as well as, I think each of the departments takes some oversight of the overall program of those CIPs to determine how they go together. And then as we engage in each of those projects, we bring all those stakeholders together to again and say, are we still right on track? Are we doing what we need to do and moving forward? I think that was your question, so.
It was. Thanks. I finally got down to the actual question, so thank you for bearing with me. I think, maybe I just bring this up because I think it may come up from others, but we had a conversation, I think, at our last meeting about the crime lab and how do we best accommodate that in the actual CIP listing, as we're going to be having a deeper discussion in the fall. So I wasn't sure where we landed on that, and maybe you could give us an update.
Yes, happy to update on that one. We did hear council's direction on that. And so in the initial draft with study session, it included $45 million of design and construction planned in the '26, '27 fiscal year time period. And that has been adjusted, so there's $2.9 million of design in fiscal '26 as a placeholder, recognizing that we need to do additional work. And then the teams are continuing to work and will bring information back to council at future study sessions or financial retreats or additional retreats to be able to get additional thoughts and input from council on where the direction of that project should go moving forward. So that has been changed and is represented in the preliminary budget documents you have.
Thank you, Mayor. I think those are my questions. I had a couple of projects, but I've talked with staff about them, and I know that they'll be coming forward in the future and will have more input.
Also, Kelly, I know on our last agenda, our last meeting, that there was a contract for a study on commuter rail or the transit stations, excuse me, which includes commuter rail. That's obviously going to be a part, since it got kicked to maybe the end of August. That's something that's been moved into the future budget.
So the project would remain funded and then would have to come back to council for approval on a contract or change of scope? Or if you decided not to do the project, then we would remove the funding from that. But the budget as it exists gives full opportunity for council to make those decisions to move forward in what direction you provide.
And then just one more follow-up question. It's kind of along the lines of the, well, not really. It's its own issue. But there was another project in here that I forgot to flag for the council prior, which was, I didn't have any, I don't believe I had any funding for this upcoming year, but was one of the out-year expenditures on a community culture and heritage facility. And we just, there haven't been any briefings on this, so I wasn't really sure what that was a placeholder for.
Did a quick search and find Mayor, Vice Mayor Yentes. So I think a culture and education center in the Parks and Recreation, it's out in the years beyond '10. So it's a placeholder for a future potential park and recreation amenity, but I don't think we have a lot of it fleshed out yet, and it isn't in the near term. Any of the other councilmembers have comments or questions?
The Repairing Education Center used to be one of those types of items too, and we've moved that up finally. Somebody lobbied that and finally got it done.
Any other questions on the other side of the desk? Okay. Well, if that concludes all the questions from council, if there's any discussion or if we'd like to make a motion for agenda item 10.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion carries 5-2, and I think that's the conclusion of the consent agenda.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Moving on to our public hearing items for this evening, we don't, I don't have any slips from anyone wishing to speak on anything on our public hearing agenda. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the two liquor license items, 16 and 17. Does anyone wish to pull 18 or 19? Or can we go with one motion? I haven't heard from anyone. One motion? One motion for, so 16, 17, 18, and 19. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and take a motion for those four items.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember September, second by Vice Mayor Yentes. Please vote. Those items pass 7-0. Now I will recess our regular meeting and reconvene in a special meeting so that we can have our discussion about the budget. We have two items on our agenda this evening, the first one being to conduct a hearing regarding the FY 2023 property tax levy and direct staff, if necessary. So we have Kelly Fost here to answer any questions. We've had a study session on this. We've all had opportunities to do one-on-ones with Kelly and the budget team. I don't know if anyone would like a presentation or would you just like to ask questions of Kelly? Questions are probably much more direct. Yeah. Councilmember Tilke, would you like to start?
Thank you. Kelly, would you mind, for the public, explaining what we're doing tonight as far as it being a preliminary?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So Mayor, Councilmember Tilke, tonight is the preliminary budget adoption. And in Arizona, that sets the maximum expenditure limit for the upcoming year. And then there is a final budget adoption that will be in June. And so today, we will be asking council to adopt the preliminary budget number to set that expenditure limit, and then the property tax rate as well. So the first reading on that. And then final property tax adoption would be in June as well.
So on item 20, this is the property tax levy. And this property tax stays within the amount that we promised the voters when they approved the bonds. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So it would remain at the 99 cents per $100 of assessed value, which was what was indicated to voters when they approved the bonds.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson, did you want to ask any questions?
Just one question. Would you explain why the levy is more this year than it was last year?
Sure. So the levy is the total dollar amount of property tax that is gained. And as the town grows and more businesses and residents or the value of individual properties increasing appreciation, that creates more value in the town. So we're able to keep the rate at 99 cents because there are more properties or more value in the town that that is spread out over.
And what are those funds used for?
The funds are restricted. The secondary property tax can only The secondary property tax can only be used on bonds that were approved by voters, voter-authorized bonds. We can't use it for anything else. We keep it in a separate account only for that purpose.
And if we don't have that amount, what happens?
If we don't collect that amount of revenue?
Yes.
It is the pledged revenue source for the bonds. The town could default on them, which we wouldn't. We would have to find other money to make up, make it up, which would shorten another area of the town that typically relies on those other funds.
So, it would have an effect on, overall, in our performance of services and so forth in the community?
Yes, it could.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
The rate, the 99 cents, the 99 cents, the rate, how's that calculated?
It's a function of the property, total property value and the amount that we need to collect for the debt service payments.
So, we take the amount that we need to collect to pay the debt service payments on the voter-approved bonds, and we divide that by the value of all of the property in the town. Is that correct? Is that a yes?
I believe so. I can't do that much math in the top of my head.
Okay, without doing any math, could you tell me what we divide in order to come up with the number? There must be two things that we use to calculate it, something divided by something else, right? What would those two things be?
It'd be total, the three parts of the equation are the total value of the town or assessed value, the amount that we need from the property tax with the levy, and then that equals the rate.
Right, so the way we come up with the rate is we have a, we have a fraction, if I understand correctly. And the top of that fraction is the sum of all the payments we need to pay the debt. I think that's what you just said, right? So, the top of that equation is the sum of all the payments that we need to pay the debt that was voter-approved. There's no math involved, that's just what goes on top.
Okay.
Right? And then the bottom would be the sum of the assessed value of all of the properties in Gilbert. No math involved, that's just what the normal would be, right? Is that right?
It's hard for me.
Or, correct me, I mean, you do this for a living. I'm just here almost as a volunteer. Help me out. What would we divide to come up with the rate? I mean, somehow we get this rate of 99 cents. Help me out.
Sorry. On the spot, it's hard for me to do all of the math. Can you help me?
I don't want any math. Is there, Patrick, is there someone better to ask that could tell me, we come up with a rate, we take something, we divide it by something else? Is there someone better to ask that could tell me, I don't need any math, no calculator, I'm just asking, what are those two numbers? How do you come up with them? I'm not asking for the number, just what is it? Maybe it's not as simple as I'm making it sound. Could somebody else help me out?
Mayor, Councilmember Hendricks. Kelly, if you want to take just a minute, I think Kelly can get you the information.
Okay.
Give her just a second.
And I'm not asking for numbers. No math.
Councilman, I, I think that part of the equation that you're not putting in there is, it dictates the amount of debt that we can accumulate, I guess, to stay within the 99 cents. So, those figures, I think, will probably work. It's just that we can only sell the amount of bonds that we have the ability to pay back on an annual basis, which is part of that equation that you're, I think, trying to get to.
No, I'm just trying to understand how we get the rate. I mean, a rate, just a general definition of rate, if we look it up, rate is something per something, like miles per hour, miles per gallon, dollars per assessed value. That's a rate. And I'm trying to understand, what is this rate? Something per something. What are those two things?
Appreciate the moment to collect my thoughts.
Okay.
It is the calculation, you take the levy and you divided it by the total value that's taxable in the town, divide by 100 is the part that is missing for me.
So, basically, the other than divided by 100 to make it a percentage, we are taking the total of the debt service payments for the bonds approved by the voters. That's the top portion of that rate. The bottom portion of that rate would be the total of the assessed value of all the property in Gilbert, divided by 100 to make it a percentage. That'd be the tough part of the math, divide by the 100 to make it a percentage. That's the math part, so far, right?
Okay.
Am I good there?
I think so.
So, the, what we call the levy, which would be the sum of all the payments that we're going to make on those voter-approved bonds, we add those up. That number, I'm assuming, doesn't change unless we choose to somehow manipulate it and issue bonds with the sole purpose of manipulating that number. Otherwise, it's going to be some fixed number, that's what the bonds are. So, that number's not going to change.
So, we, we do have options as we structure the bonds to be able to choose which years have what principal and interest when we first issue them. And so, yes, in order to help accommodate the, what was indicated to the voters and the instruction from council to keep at the 99 cents, we have worked to structure the bonds to be able to fit within that amount.
So, we can manipulate that number?
When we first issue the bonds, we have flexibility to do things.
So, the bottom number, do we know how many properties are in Gilbert?
I don't know the number.
Probably thousands?
2.9 billion?
Maybe tens of thousands?
I don't know.
Hundred thousand, a lot of properties. So, we don't really know that number until the county assessor tells us what it is in, what, January, February?
About February 10th every year.
So, we don't know the bottom number. And if we were going to try to figure it out, we'd have to figure out, I don't know, 100,000 properties, I don't know how many there are, and add up all the value of all of them to come up with that number. So, we don't know that number. And we don't know the top number because that depends on how many bonds we issue. And so, where I'm confused is to get this rate that stays the same for the last several years, we have to somehow come up with a debt service to pay our bills or pay our bond payments for a year. And we take that number and we divide it by the sum of the assessed values of 100,000 properties, 200,000 properties, and it's 99 cents. And magically, those two huge unknown numbers, billions of dollars, magically, they could be 99 cents again this year. So, I've got to think, we must have had a meeting somewhere, somebody must have sat down and said, the key thing is here, we want to keep the rate at exactly 99 cents, not 99.8, not 98. We want the rate to be 99. Does that be correct? At some point, somebody had a meeting, must have been after they got the assessed values from the county assessor, and then decided we need to create enough debt so that we don't lower taxes, we don't raise taxes. The key is keep that rate the same. Is that pretty much how it works? We have to have a meeting to work back into the levy so we keep the rate the same?
Mayor, Councilmember Hendricks, my understanding is, the direction from council has been to stay at the 99 cents, and so that's what we've worked with when we structure the bonds. And then that helps maximize the amount of principal and minimize the amount of interest within those constraints.
Right. So, the direction, as you see it from council, was that the rate should always be 99 cents or .99 of the property value. Whether we need the money, don't need the money, that's not important. The important thing is to keep the rate the same. So, if somebody's property value doubled, they just pay twice as much taxes, but the important thing is to keep the rate the same. It doesn't matter how much we need, the important thing is to keep the rate the same. So, if my house doubles in value, I pay twice as much taxes. It's not a function of what the town needs or what the town needs to spend. The town will just spend more to make sure my tax rate stays the same.
Mayor, Councilmember Hendricks, we do our best to stay within that. This year, we are issuing bonds, and so we have the opportunity to stay very close to that. And we've had some ability to call some bonds and do some things over the past couple of years, which has allowed us to stay right at that 99 cents. We also, when we forecast, we assume that the town will grow a little bit by statutory maximum. It can only grow by 5% for a particular property, so that kind of helps with the volatility. But in the future, there will probably be some time where that deviates a little bit if we don't sell any additional bonds, where we wouldn't be able to correct that back to the 99 cents. But we have been doing our best to meet that direction.
I'm not criticizing the job you're doing. You're doing a great job. It's got to be almost impossible to keep the rate at 99 cents every year repeatedly because in order to do that, you'd have to either manipulate the money that we claim the town needs, because that number on the top, it's one number divided by the other. It's not difficult math, it's two numbers, and then divide by 100 to make it a percent. The top number should be the sum of the bond payments or expenses that the town needs for things the voters want. It shouldn't be a number that moves up, down, over. That's the number we need because that's what the voters want. So, that number shouldn't change a whole lot. Now, we have this number that we don't even know because it's several hundred thousand properties, and that goes on the bottom. And somehow, we divide those numbers and the rate always stays the same. So, the bottom line, there has to be a meeting at some time during the year, and somebody must sit in that meeting. And the important thing is to keep the rate the same. It's not to say how much money does the town need, what kind of improvement should be done, what's important, what's not important. The key thing is to keep the rate the same. That's the instruction the council has given you, keep the rate the same. Don't consider what we need, keep the rate the same, and manipulate the tax to keep the rate the same. Is that right?
Mayor, Councilmember Hendricks, it's not. We have the ability, when we issue bonds, to try and set that top number at, at an amount that we think will be close, that will, we believe will get as close to that 99 cent rate.
So, that number's fixed?
We have a little bit of flexibility because we can keep up to 10% in reserves. So, that gives us a little flexibility.
If that number's fixed, the only way that we could end up with the rate at .99 consistently year after year, we must somehow manipulate the property value. Is there some way the town of Gilbert manipulates the value of my house? Because you've got to manipulate one or the other. You can't have both. If you're going to keep it at .99, you've got to manipulate one or the other. There's no other way. It's not difficult math, it's just, you can't keep it the same without manipulating one of those numbers. I don't think there's any question, we must manipulate the levy in order to keep the rate the same. So, we're obviously not looking at what does the town need, what should the taxpayers be paying for. What we're looking at is keep the rate the same. And I can keep asking, you can keep avoiding my question, but I mean, you're a highly educated lady. You didn't get in this position by not understanding how to divide two numbers in a fraction. And I appreciate that you're trying to give the answer that is appropriate by the guidance you've been given by town management, but the bottom line is, we're manipulating the levy to keep the rate the same. And the average voter doesn't understand what we're talking about. So, when it comes election time, we have politicians that stand up, and they say, we kept your rate the same, we didn't raise your taxes. The rate isn't the tax you pay, the levy is the tax you pay. We're keeping the rate the same so we can spin this political, we can gaslight the voters is what we're talking about. And I'm not criticizing what you're doing. If you believe you're doing what the council told you, your statement a minute ago was the council instructed you to keep the rate at or as near to .99 as possible, and you've done that. And there's only one way you can do that. You cannot manipulate by property value. So, the only thing you can manipulate is the levy, so you're deciding that we need more or less money, issue more bonds, issue less bonds, spend more, spend less, to keep the rate the same for an unknown reason. I don't know what the problem would be, is if we allowed some of the bonds to pay off and property taxes went down. Would that be so horrible if we don't need the money? Why not let the taxpayers have their money instead of trying to manipulate them out of it and tell them we kept the rate the same? The rate has nothing to do with the property tax that I pay. I pay a dollar amount, I don't pay a rate. When I go to the gas station, I pay for so many dollars of gas. I don't pay miles per gallon or, anyway, I think we've beat this far enough, but the voters should watch this and pay attention and understand how they're being manipulated when they vote on these bonds. And it's important to keep enough bonds out there to issue so we can keep the taxes up. It's not because we need the money or we need the projects, we need to be able to keep the money flowing through these bond issuances.
Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you. Councilwoman Hendricks, I appreciate your, your passion on, on the rate versus the way that we communicate with our citizens. Kelly, I apologize that, I feel that you were badgered a bit and you're just trying to do your job up there, and I apologize that you had to go through that. But we, as a council, set the priorities of the projects that we need to bond for, not, not the town staff. We asked the voters to pass the bond, and I know that you weren't in favor of that. We made it very clear that the rate was going to stay the same. However, if your assessed valuation increases, you could have an increase in your property tax. I was on the campaign as a co-chair, and we made sure that that message was always out there. In fact, anytime something came through and it wasn't in there, I made sure that change was made so that the public could understand. Now, I'm not a expert on county assessor and how that works, but I believe there is a limit to the amount of how much your assessed valuation will be increased that you're going to be taxed on. And if your house doubles, you're not going to be charged double. And so, hopefully, that's not going away anytime soon, that, that limit on that. But, so, I, I appreciate your passion, I really do. And I, I just want to say that there is no intent from this council to disillusion the residents. And I feel comfortable myself saying that we are going to sell bonds and prioritize projects to keep within that tax rate to the best that we can. And there could be a slight increase in your property tax. Again, I pay close to $2,600 a year on my house, and for the town of Gilbert, I think mine is $250. So, you might get a $5 increase. And I just want you to know, you may get a $5 increase. If your house is a lot more expensive than mine, then you might get more than that. So, I, I don't believe there's any behind-the-scenes meetings. It's all been up here and us setting the priorities. It has come from staff, but we've given approval for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. Kelly, I apologize for the treatment that you've seen this evening. It is not acceptable, in my opinion. You do an amazing job for this community, and you should not have to be spoken to in the manner that you were just spoken to. Your home will go up 5% every year based on Prop 117 that was passed after the recession in 2012. If your home doesn't meet its full cash value, that's going to happen annually, and it's only going to be 5%. My bill this year for the town of Gilbert, and I have said this before, I live in a very modest home, and my bill this year is going up $27.22 for the entire bill, so under $30 because my home increased in value by 5%. Tom Blodgett with Community Impact did a great article with Assessor Eddie Cook, Second-in-Command Don Marie Buckland, talking in a third person, and I can't remember who that person's name was, talking about what the levy is, how the assessment works, Prop 117, what that means for your annual tax bill. Gilbert does not have a primary property tax, we only have a secondary property tax. And we've worked very hard as a council to lower that, that rate since I've been on council. We've gone from either $1.6 or $1.5, I can't remember what year it was, down to the 99 cent rate. And we did say that when we put the bonds out to the voters that we would stay at that 99 cent rate, meaning that we would work very hard to not increase that rate for our members of the community so that we could keep that in check and still be able to collect the funds that are needed to pay down that debt. These funds cannot be used for anything in this community other than paying down debt. These funds cannot be used for anything in this community other than paying down debt. They are not, they are not used for fire, police, anybody's salaries, any, anything other than to pay down the debt of the community that is approved by the voters. And again, we have worked very hard to make sure that, that number was $1.25 just, I think, 10 years ago. I think it was about 10, 12 years ago that was $1.25 instead of 99 cents, and it's been brought down to 99 cents to keep us within a really reasonable amount. And like I said, my tax bill has gone up $27.22 from 2020 to 2021. And again, your homes can only go up in value by 5% based on a state law, Proposition 117. It is not going to go up. And I know everybody feels like, Zillow says I can sell my house for $500,000, so my house has doubled in price. That's not what your home is being assessed under. Your home is being assessed under an amount through the county assessor's office that they're doing to check, and they, they work on that every single year. That's what their job is. And it is based on that full cash value versus the limited value on your tax bill. And if you go and look at your tax bill right now, you will see that the town of Gilbert is one of the lowest portions of your tax bill. The highest amount of your tax bill is going to your school districts and to other districts within your community, whether it be other flood control, depending on where you live, depending on where your property is, they're all different things. And I would be very happy to have the clerk's office pop my bill up on the screen right now because I was prepared for this discussion again tonight. And I've actually pulled a comparable home in Chandler and a comparable home in Glendale because I thought those are two cities that we're very much like. We're the fourth largest, fifth largest, and sixth largest cities, I think, in the, in the state of Arizona right now. This is my bill, right here. If you look at this, it is, right? Yes, that's my bill, right there. So you can see, based on my numbers, that my bill's going from $1,738.78 to $1,766. Again, I live in a very modest home in Gilbert. I know some people's tax bills are $3,000, $4,000 based on the house that they choose to live in. I live in a very modest house. But if you look at that bill and you look at this, which one's that? Which one's, oh, yep, that's still mine. We have, that's Chan, okay, that's Chandler. We have, there's a pie chart on that bill that if you go and pull your own bill, and everybody's bill is public record. You can, you can go home and pull my bill. It's public record on the county assessor's website. If you go and look at the pie chart under E, it says your elected city council has levied 0.0000 to your town tax bill. And I talked about this last year. We have a very-